I call this public hearing to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Attorney Dempsey?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Rogan?
The purpose of said public hearing is to hear testimony and discuss the following. File of the Council Number 74, 2019, amending file of the Council Number 44, 2014, and file of the Council Number 118, 2015, entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor and Other Appropriate Officials of the City of Scranton to Take All Necessary Actions to Implement the Consolidated Submission for Community Planning and Development Programs to be Funded Under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the Period Beginning January 1, 2015, and for the Period Beginning January 1, 2016 by Amending the 2015 Action Plan and the 2016 Action Plan by Utilizing $63,831.69 from the 2015 Action Plan and $63,071.21 from the 2016 Action Plan in order to provide a total of $126,902.90 under the Home Investment Partnership Program to build a two-unit rental house for low-income families in the city of Scranton or to acquire and rehab two vacant houses in the city of Scranton for low-income families by and through the Scranton Lacawanna Resources Development Corporation, a subsidiary of the Scranton Lacawanna Human Development Agency.
Okay, we have two names on the sign-in sheet for this public hearing, and again, this is just for Item 6A, which was just read. Our first speaker on this list is Regina Mansour. Is that, I'm saying that right?
Yes, yes.
You can get to, go to the podium, please, and then just state your name and your address for the record, please.
Hi, Regina.
That's okay.
Hi, I'm Regina Mansour, 103 Azu Drive, Scranton, PA. My husband and I own a duplex on 714 South Webster Avenue, and it's on the market. It's listed at $109,000. I would like you to consider that property as possibility for buying it with the funds that are available. It's in excellent condition, brand-new furnace, year-old. It's in a nice neighborhood, schools, convenient, bus route right at the corner, and it could be a two-bedroom downstairs, single upstairs. But we have single people, couples, low, moderate incomes, that are in need of housing, decent housing, in our area. I have the listing information. Could I present this to someone?
Sure, you could leave it Kathy right there.
Okay. It's listed with Paul Marks, the Realtor, so if you could kindly consider that, I would appreciate it, not only for myself, but for the benefit of people who are in need. Thank you.
And is there a contact number on that information as well, if we need to get in touch?
For the Realtor, yes.
Okay.
Deal directly with the Realtor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And the next name on the sheet is Ron Elman.
Yes, gentlemen, I just got a quick question. Last, maybe two weeks ago, I've been fighting with my insurance company, the Hartford. They don't come no worse than these people, let me tell you. I was complaining about something, and they sent me a letter back saying, I'm not exactly sure, I think they said it cost $117 a square foot if my house burned down to rebuild it, and you're talking about-
Now, Mr. Elman, is this have to do with, with the public hearing?
Yes.
With the grant money?
You're talking about $127,000. You want to build a duplex and refurnish two other houses? That's impossible. I'm not against the idea, but that's no money. Where's the, you know, how you gonna do it? I wish you could tell Hartford how to do it. Am I wrong? Why don't you just talk about one little single house or something, and I don't think you could do it. My roof cost $7,000 a couple years ago, and now they said that's a bargain, you know? I don't know. All you people, you just think of things in the wrong way to me. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the names on the sign-in sheet. Is there anybody else that would like to talk during this public hearing?
No, Murray Schumacher. I have no, no opposition to the switching of the funding, but I would definitely not want new housing built. We have enough empty structures in this city that we could, that they should be used, and a lot of elderly people are going out looking for jobs just based on what the school board is doing this year, this coming year, and succeeding several years. And I think that would sort of be a slap in the face that you're gonna give probably somebody that comes into the, in here, give them a brand-new house, and, and plus, as I say, the main reason, though, is all the vacancies we have. So I think that should be primary. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
May I just add something?
Sure.
That, my property, the house, speaking of, I had purchased that on my own. I was a first-time homeowner at the time, and I was in France for a COVID-19, and I was appreciating it, and met all requirements at that time. So I imagine that property, and as the gentleman said, can't build a house to $127,000.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address? No, I'll, public hearings adjourned. Thank you. We'll be back at six in a couple minutes for our regularly scheduled meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who passed away in our community, especially Mr. John J. Walsh, who is a frequent attendee at our meetings, who passed away suddenly.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Attorney Dempsey?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Gahn, would you like to make a motion?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Councilman Perry as temporary chair for the Committee on Rules.
Second. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed? Ayes have it, so move. Dispense with the reading of the minutes, please.
Third order, 3A, Single Tax Office City Funds Distributed Comparison Report, 2018, 2019, year-to-date September 30, 2019. 3B, Tax Assessors Results Report, for hearing date held September 18, 2019. 3C, Breakdown of Eligible Salaries for the Liquid Fuels Account for the Months of July, August, and September 2019.
Are there any comments? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
I have one. The Scranton, the city of Scranton is preparing their five-year consolidated plan, annual action plan, and its analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. As part of the planning process, the city is conducting a survey to identify residents' needs in the community and ideas on what city residents would like to see funds used for. Please take a few minutes, if you haven't already, and complete the survey, which can be found at the top of the city's website, scrantonpa.gov.
I have a few as well. Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for attending. My first announcement is I want to thank our Ethics Board. I was reading the paper today, and I see that we have our first scheduled meeting for October 10th at 5:00 PM. So thank you to the people who are following through on that and making sure that gets scheduled in a timely and expedited fashion. We do appreciate that. The second thing I will mention is, I saw this on Facebook, and it had to do with the Scranton Police Office, and I really think it's a beautiful sentiment. And it says, "Today is October 3rd, 2019. Two years ago, on October 3rd, 2017, Scranton Police Officer Christopher Hallock was diagnosed with cancer. The Scranton Police Officer writing this post is Officer Chris Hallock. I just wanted to send a special thank you to the great city of Scranton, the many business owners, and the residents who call it home. So many people have supported me and my family through this difficult journey. Community policing has always been so important to me and my favorite part of being a police officer. No matter what you are dealing with or going through, do not give up on yourself. Continue to push forward. Take it one step at a time." A quote that helped me on tough days was, "Tomorrow is a brand-new day with a brand-new beginning. Be kind to one another, and let's continue to make Scranton the great city that it is." So I thought that was a beautiful sentiment, and to Officer Hallock, we send our thoughts and our sentiments for a speedy recovery. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple announcements. Beginning today, October 7th, the License Inspecting and Permits Department will no longer accept cash payments. Only credit cards, checks, and money orders will be accepted as form of payment. There is no fee imposed for using your credit card. Mayor Evans made that arrangement that no fee would be charged. Once again, cash payments will no longer be accepted in Licensing and Permits Department. Also, this Sunday, October 13th, will be the 24th Annual Steamtown Marathon. I can't believe it's almost been 25 years already. I remember when that first started, it was a big deal. I can't believe it's been 24 years already. The annual Steamtown Marathon will be held. Please be mindful of the runners as you travel through the city on Sunday, and plan for slight delays and/or road closures. I would like to congratulate all the participants and wish them a good race day. Next Monday, October 14th, City Hall will be closed in observance of Columbus Day holiday. DPW will also be off that day. Refuge and recycling will be one day behind next week. Council's next regular scheduled meeting will be on Monday, October 21st. A public hearing will be held that evening at 5:45 for Item 5B on tonight's agenda. The legislation pertains to a parking, a parking permit on the 900 block of Jefferson Avenue. Thank you.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Our first speaker tonight is Les Binler.
Good evening, Councilmember. City resident, homeowner. Last week, I was watching the meeting, and I didn't see the whole part. There was a talk about, I'm not sure what it is, people have to buy garbage cans? They can't just put bags out? Did I hear that right?
One of the audience speakers had mentioned that, correct?
Is that an ordinance, or is that the law that's been on the books?
Yeah, I believe it is. It's, again, Les, don't quote me how it's written, but all garbage has to be in a contain, self-contained, and a lid on it. So dogs, rodents, don't get out of-
What if it isn't?
What if it isn't? Then it's in violation of the ordinance.
Well, if people have to buy new garbage cans, is the city gonna be responsible to pay, buy new ones if the garbage men throw them and break them like the recycle people do?
I don't think so.
Well, they should be.
I mean, but if you're ever having a problem, give us a call.
My, no, my garbage men are great. They don't throw it, but the recycle men-
Yeah, and if anybody's ever having an issue, they can always give us a call, and we can, you know, we can take care of it. We're, we're never one not to, to get something out there to help.
All right. Okay. Couldn't believe when I saw this in the paper the other day about the mayor giving out $10,000 raises. We're still a distressed city. We have been for well over 20 years, and he's giving out raises like it's candy on Halloween. $10,000 raises? We're still a distressed city, and I, I don't think he should have the authority to do something like that, since he wasn't, people talk about taxpayer money. That's taxpayer money. He wasn't elected by the taxpayers. He was put in by four of you up there. Attorney Dempsey wasn't here then, but doesn't that have to go before council? He could just give raises arbitrarily?
I had, we, I think we all had questioned, and I had issues with this being done outside of the budget process, but we were told by our solicitor when we questioned it that because it's intra-departmental and not interdepartmental, that he does have the discretion to do that.
I don't think that's right. And he said something in yesterday's paper. Quote, he said, "If anyone expected him to be a placeholder, they were mistaken." Well, in my opinion, I think that's all he should be. Like I said, I don't think he's got a right to spend taxpayer money like that, and that's tax, anything spent is taxpayer money. And like I said, he wasn't elected by the taxpayers, whose money he's spending. He was put in by four of you, which I think was wrong then, because I know there were more qualified people than him, and you put him in because he's your buddy. But I think that's a huge mistake. We're still a distressed city, and he shouldn't be giving out $10,000 raises. That's all I have on that. Last week, Councilman Gahn and Councilman Donahue, I heard you saying that, that chief should be fired. I totally disagree with you. You talk about, you know, taxpayers. What have you people ever done to save the taxpayers' money? You've, Councilman Gahn, you've been here for a number of years now. You didn't do a thing to try and do away with that illegal garbage fee. And, Councilman Donahue, when you were on the school board, you voted for a tax hike every single year you've been on there.
I know, I only voted, I voted for a tax hike once. I voted against it the other time.
I was told that somebody was on the school board with you, that you voted every year for a tax hike.
That's wrong.
And criticize a guy for putting a couple gallons of gas, or a couple gas tanks, and you don't do anything to try and help the taxpayers in this city. Nothing is done to help the taxpayers. All you do, no other was raise taxes. So before you criticize somebody else, you know, look in the mirror and see if you're gonna save us money. I've been coming to this council for years and years and years, long before any of you have been up there, complaining about this garbage fee. We pay our taxes to have our garbage collected. We shouldn't have to pay $300, and you people don't do a darn thing about it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Norma Jeffries.
Good evening, Councilwoman. Norma Jeffries, Scranton resident. And as I sat here last week, I was glad to be here on Monday nights, because as you know, before I was saying I couldn't come on Monday nights because of my Bible study night, but that's been changed to Wednesday, so now I can sit and listen to you guys, everyone. I had a lot of questions last week. I'm very interested when you all started talking about the gas cards. I took a lot of notes because I didn't understand a lot of what you were saying. One of the one things that I didn't understand, when you talked about the audit of the gas cards, will that audit include each person that has a gas card? Do you have a list of those people? That's what I left with that question. Or is it just this one individual that you were pinpointing? But then I did read the, in the paper, it's going to be everyone that has a gas card, so, but I was waiting for that to be clear when I left, but it wasn't. So, you know, whoever put this in the paper, I was able to read that. So that answered that question. I also thought, too, I worked for a Fortune 500 company, and I had a credit card. And one of the things that they told us when we got that credit card and you signed it, the only thing that will get you fired will be touching the company's money. So many a times, I turned my voucher in, and I was, I didn't have a receipt or something, so I just didn't put it down. So I was wondering, when you're doing the audit, are you doing an audit of the other credit cards as well? Are there other card, credit cards for those people that travel, for their hotels and meals, or is it just the Sunoco card that you referenced to? One of the courses that I took over my many years of working was the shadow of the leader. And I think the shadow of the leader is something that's very appropriate here, because possibly if that is one of the courses that people had taken, someone operating in the shadow of the leader, they're going to follow this leader and also do things that are not honest. I don't know, I hope not. But, you know, everyone needs to look at themselves, if they're a leader, and how they are functioning, because people are looking at them. Another, this is a little side note. I think you need to put the councilmen's names on here, because when I got home to write my notes and everything, I couldn't remember your last name, Attorney Dempsey. So I wrote down on my little note, Attorney, and just a blank line. And I went back here, I said, geez, what's her last name? So not until tonight was I able to write in your last name. But you mentioned that there was $30,000 in Sunoco credit card usage over two months. And is that just something for the municipal, the municipal vehicles, or is that the DPW vehicles as well? Is that a separate fee for the DPW vehicles? And I was just wondering about that. What else was I thinking about? Notes I took on. I mentioned about the credit cards and about the audit, and, don't touch the money. Okay, now, my other concern was the GPS tracking. Also, the company I work for, they had GPSs. I never agreed with it, because I figured that if I have to track you, if I have to follow you, then you're not a person worthy of working for me. You're an honest person, and you're gonna put a, a thing in my car to track me? Well, then that's not something, I don't think I want that person working for me. So I thought, I said, a piece of paper that is signed in a document is much, much more cheaper than a GPS system. A GPS system in the cars are gonna have to be installed, trained, maintained, updated, and paid for. So who's ever out getting the RFPs on this GPS system, I just hope that they're taking every little thing that's involved with that, because it's not just a matter of putting that little thing in the car and reading out the data at the end of the day. There's more to it than that. And again, if you can't be trusted, why do I want, want you to work for me? And Mr. Gahn, I appreciated you introducing me last week to the gentleman that was here for the Roads Department. And with the two people, that's a lot of work to cover the city. However, you know, I was thinking, where is that signed contract? Are we ever gonna see the signed contract for the company that was gonna do the signs?
Yeah, we voted on that. We can get you a copy of it if you would like, but we voted on that, I believe, last year. So there is a signed contract with that company in our office.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joan Hodawanitz.
Joan Hodawanitz, city resident, homeowner, and taxpayer. I, too, would like to send out my condolences to the Walsh family. You may or may not have agreed with John Walsh's politics. He did apply for both the vacant council position and the mayor, but you gotta respect and admire one thing about him. He stood up and wanted to be counted and wanted to make a difference in the city, and we need a lot more people with that kind of mentality. Speaking of standing up, I hope that everybody is aware of the upcoming debates for the November 5th election. October 15th, the eligible women voters will host the debate for mayor. You will be there, Councilman Donahue. At 6:30 PM on October 15th, in the De Naples Center, on the fourth floor, the Moskowitz Center, the Moskowitz Theater. And on October 17th, will be the debate, debate for council. Same time, same location. So I hope people show up, because especially for the position of mayor, since we did not have a primary, this may be our best, if only, opportunity to hear what the candidates say about the various issues facing our city. And we need that. We need that now. And election is, what, five weeks tomorrow? So we don't have much time. Speaking of time, what is the status of the city's independent audit, which was due on September 30th? Anybody know? Okay. So it's seven days late from its projected deliverable date, and four months and one week late from the date it's due in the Home Row Charter. So we need to find out when that's coming. The article in this morning's paper, the 800-pound gorilla in the room today, sewer sale funds in limbo. And I won't rehash the article, but I would like to know, is the public ever gonna be told when that deadline hits on those easements, so we know whether or not we get the money or we lose it? Or are we such, you know, chopped liver that we don't have a need to know? That is our money as ratepayers, and I want to know. I, I don't understand why it's confidential between the water company and the sewer authority, but I'm hoping that when that day comes by, somebody from the sewer authority will stand up and tell us what in the world happened and who shot John. I'm a little uneasy about that whole situation. Thank you for mentioning the first meeting of the Ethics Board. As you mentioned, it's Thursday, October 10th, 5:00 PM, in the Governor's Room down the hall. Please bring your own popcorn. We'll be feeling our way. We still do not have a fifth member for the board, but we don't want to continue waiting on that, because we have a lot of housekeeping things to do to get organized. With regard to the article about the salary raises for the department heads, I'll tell you, if you're a department head, and suddenly for four, or five, or six months, you become two department heads, I, I think the raise is appropriate for that particular time period. And I saw that the mayor mentioned that he would like to have that solidified in the 2020 budget to make the salaries competitive with other cities like Wilkes-Barre. And I will tell you, although I do not like the idea of raises, because I watched the raises dating back to 2014, including the mayor gave himself a raise, as you recall. We have so much fraud, waste, and abuse in the city, if you look at the events of the past year. If we ever got a handle on that, those raises would pay for themselves, and we'd probably save taxpayer dollars. So can we afford to give those raises out in the 2020 budget? Yes. If we get a handle on the, all the fraud, waste, and abuse, or even get started on it, we can do it. And on the article about Mayor Evans in the paper on Sunday, I don't agree with everything he's done or said. If I did, I would be his political lackey. But I will tell you, he's a breath of fresh air in the current environment, and I was particularly impressed that he made a point of inviting everyone who is running for mayor to come down to City Hall, so that they can be brought up to speed on everything going on in the city, and they hit the, the ground running on January 6th. That, that shows you something of his character and his motivation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ron Elman.
Hello again. Before my attack on council and the mayor and Ms. Dempsey, I want to say something that pertains to the city. Last week, Roseanne opened the back door, and this little kitten about as big as one of those cups up there ran in the house. For two days, we chased it around. It's hiding behind furniture, and we couldn't catch it. Yesterday, it got to a hole about the size of a silver dollar, where the pipe comes through the wall for the washing machine, and it was raising hell in there screaming. And I phoned some people. They said, we'll have to knock a wall apart. So I phoned Hartford, of course. They said they don't pay for it, which I expected from them rotten people like that. I didn't know what to do, so I went to the fire department last night, and in about 10 or 15 minutes, they sent a truck over, not a, not a fire engine, it was a truck. And four gentlemen come in there, and they surveyed- And four gentlemen come in there and they surveyed it. And the cat's meowing, so they knew where it was. So they took the counter apart where the sink is. The cat's caught between the two walls outside and inside. And they poked a big hole in there to reach their hand in. And the poor guy got his, his leg was caught on the pipes and he couldn't move. So they got the cat out. They put everything back together. And I don't know how to personally thank these people. They did such a good job, I didn't even expect them to put everything back together. So my neighbor asked me today what was going on. And I told him. He said, are you crazy? He said, for a cat, you're going to tear the house apart? I said, yeah, I can't leave it there. I'd do it again and again. Then he said, those men weren't working. They were engineers. I don't know what they do in a fire. So he was mad about that. Now, if anybody complains that I did something wrong or these gentlemen did something wrong, you're more welcome to send me a bill for four men for an hour. But I think the city ought to be proud of people like that. There's just no way I can thank them, even if it's just a little animal. To me, this was just a great achievement. Like I said, if somebody doesn't agree with me, send me a bill. I'm not mad at nobody, I just, except my neighbor, he's a World War II veteran, so I can expect things like that from him. I think our mayor, this little absolute power is going to his head. He's a rent-a-mayor for crying out loud. He's temporary help. I don't see where he should have the authority to make commitments that should be left up to an elected mayor. Personally, I don't have any use for the choice except one or two or three of the independents. And I don't think we need a Barbie doll. I think we need a Mr. Bolus up there that will stand up for the people of this city. You know, we had so many past problems and they're not being taken care of. Last week, you guys jumped up and down about plight. I've been complaining about this guy. He's this human dung almost in my backyard with junk cars. You don't care. I got a junk school bus with plywood all over it for some reason. It don't mean nothing. There's a city code and a state code against 10,000-pound vehicles in your yard. You don't care. All you do is tell us what you're going to do and it doesn't get done. I want something done about that. I'm going to take pictures and put them on Scranton tomorrow or something on my son's computer. Maybe I could get something done that way because this is a shame what this neighborhood's going to. You spend $100,000 on a sidewalk at Mount Pleasant. I still don't know why they couldn't pay for their own sidewalk. You go all over the city, there's bad sidewalks. They put those cuts in that lasted a year, you had to pay again. People just don't seem to know what the hell they're doing in this city anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bob Bolus.
Evening, Council Bob Bolus, Scranton. Sorry to see Mr. Walsh passing. He was another individual that was dedicated to what's wrong with the city and tried to bring suggestions. And he'll be missed as well as many of those that have passed that came here. I keep asking council to disband the authority, the park authority up there. The money that Geisinger wants to pay $100,000 a year, we should be getting $500,000 a year just in black and white dollars and cents. Money could be used for interim raises that was raised here, Mr. Gohan raised, why should we be giving interim raises? Those become a necessity at some point, just as we're having here a situation. The law office is going to get buried with a lot of the things that are changed. Your new suggestion, simplifying things, makes more sense than anything around here because simplification makes solutions very simple to get something done instead of complicated stuff. So I give you credit for that suggestion. But the tax money, the money we get from Geisinger up there will help increase and decrease the tax rate. It'll increase the tax base, decrease the tax rate. It could go to interim. It could help reduce the school board taxes that we got hit with. Everything affecting the people here, but priority is NaOG first. Nobody here, I don't think, could tell me what kind of money they make, what salaries they pay, or anything else that goes on up in NaOG Park. And that's pathetic. It's our park. Okay? But you guys need to do something about it. I filed a reconsideration on the injunction we filed, and tomorrow we're filing a new injunction and a new complaint that they complained about the complaint. And those that were complaining were more concerned about where the hell I lived rather than what the real issues going on in NaOG Park are and the city of Scranton. It's about money supply and demand. It's a business decision, not a political one. And, you know, the problem is, we got to be about the city, not about politics. And that's what's got to change here. And it starts with NaOG right now as a starting stone. As far as Chief DeSarno, you know, the past is past, Mr. Gohan. And Billy, you and I have talked in the past, the present is now. All the past issues are moot issues, whether it was right or wrong. It's not for us to make that decision. The past mayors allowed this practice to take place and we're not all stupid. We know what went on in Scranton. It starts now. You have the mayor there. You know, Wayne is doing a good job. He's trying to make the changes. He's doing what's necessary to be done. He sat on this council, but then again, he could have brought up our past cars and uses and all. I brought up about GPSs, gave them ideas on how to monitor money. That's what we do in our business. We know where everybody is and everything that's going on right to the penny. I brought that suggestion here. I got sick of bringing it because nobody wanted to listen. So now we're criticizing the fire chief. Again, I'm a first responder. I've been around a long time. You can't criticize an individual who's given permission by his boss. One way or the other, it could be challenged in court, and if it gets a challenge in court against them, I'll personally finance his litigation. That's how strong I am about it. It's wrong. We've demoralized enough people and the city's been demoralized enough. Let's take our heads out of the stand and go forward. Let's do what we need to do for the people in this city, not criticize and demoralize our people who are given a past practice. We can't keep going backwards. The other issue is, I've been challenged, as everybody's familiar with, on my run for mayor here in the city of Scranton. Well, people do need to decide who's going to be mayor here, whether it's Mr. Donahue or whoever. We should make the choice, not a party. And the fact that they file all this nonsense from the two parties are nothing but cowards. I have litigation pending against Cullen and I also have a pending against Spano. I've been told I can't do it. In 1991, these charges were that they were arguing about. My case is expunged as of my age at 70. It's the law and it's already been put for expulsion. But there is nothing out there that they raised. I could take a seat. I could be on the ballot. And I could take the seat, subject to a legal challenge that'll be moot because, as our attorneys know, that if you miss a deadline, you can't ever bring it again. And it became a moot issue. So I could do that. And that's the reason I'm bringing this up. I know a legal challenge may prevail, but I know will prevail. I don't lie about on my forms that I could take the seat. I don't lie about anything. There's no reason to lie. Not in our city or for any reason for anybody to lie. We're only here for one purpose, and that's to take care of our city and bring it back to what it used to be. Get rid of the demoralizing. You know my issues, my position as far as...
Thank you, Mr. Bolus.
What's going to happen here in the future with council? That issue has not died yet and will be coming again to the forefront. You don't take a seat here for your own advancement. You take it because you're going to produce something for the city and its people. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the names on the signing sheet. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak today?
Good evening. Lee Morgan. You know, today I thought I'd come here and probably say to this council that at 60 years old, a lot of people have come, I'm 60, but I mean, over the period of time that I've come here, which is probably over three decades or more, a lot of people have brought a lot of valuable issues up and they've been lost. I don't know if the political system can bend to the desires of the people that reside under its reign because, you know, Scranton only has a Democratic Party. There's not really Republican Party. But, you know, I've watched the decline of this city throughout my whole lifetime. So I mean, I grew up in Capous Avenue, we're very close to the pool. The pool there has been closed for probably 10 or 15 years and not fixed. Grant monies come into the city and it's been squandered and wasted. We've had great plans about a revitalization of the downtown for decades, going all the way back into the '60s and '70s. And we've neglected the neighborhoods exactly that long. And from 103,000 people, now we're down to about 70. I don't see any light anywhere in sight in regards to a revival of this city. And I'm going to be very honest. Looking at America, the country that I live in, we are a very poor country. And you might not realize that, but if you watch the debt clock spin and you watch the liabilities that the American people are under, you listen to state legislators talk about the 501 school districts in the Commonwealth and how they have a plan that if they go bankrupt one at a time, they're going to shift their pension debt to the rest of the remaining solvent school districts. When you look at the Teamsters Union and many of the other pensions across this country that are bankrupt, and you look at Social Security, and you look at the state, and you look at the municipalities, all the pension debt they hold, I know state employees who were told that they'll be lucky if they collect 50% of their pension. And we have councils and we have elected governments across this country that just don't seem to get it, that in the 1970s and '80s, we shed all of our wage-earning jobs that lifted poor people up into the middle class. And we've played a silly game in this country, as if judges had high ground to anything. Their politicians with a law degree. And when you watch their rulings and see what's taken place with organized labor over an extended period of time with former presidents who have played the public and the public unions over an extended period of time, now we've got a governor who's on the attack for cyber schools because the public school system, not only has it failed, but it's collapsed due to our legislators in Harrisburg, who has saddled it with unbelievable amounts of pension obligation. And students in schools with 20- and 30-year-old textbooks with no chance for reaching the middle class because all their jobs have been shed to the Third World under a make-believe opinion that we're going to raise the rest of the world out of poverty and all we did is put our own country into it. I work with a lot of people in their mid-'70s that are driving tractor trailers and heavy trucks. They have no plan to retire until they go to the cemetery. It's almost pathetic to see where our country is. And then we listen to the dreamers we elect who talk about poverty. Look at our neighborhoods with all the holes and we talk as if condemnation of properties is taking place because people won't invest in their property. But they can't because the government is taxing them at a rate that's just beyond belief. And the one thing to really remember here is that public housing, when it's destroyed by a tenant, is repaired by the tax base and not the person like a private individual does when he owns a property. And we're talking here about, tonight, about garbage cans and whether they have a lid or not? Well, I'd just like to say that the vast majority of residents of the city throw out their garbage in a bag. And I have furnished my tenants and myself with garbage cans. And I have to say that the lids last about two or three weeks and then they're gone. So we've got to look at reality. And do we have a government that can see the reality on any spectrum at all, from the top all the way down to the bottom? I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Got a crick in my back here. I haven't heard a word. I was a little...
Dave, for the record, would you want to just say your name?
Dave Dobson, resident.
Thank you.
Taxpayer. Disappointed last week, I've been mentioning the grant to restore City Hall and nobody found it within their infinite wisdom to mention it to me that it has been applied for. I hope it's been applied for because it's not going to go away, no matter what. City vehicles, I would remind people that parking in front of your house with a company vehicle can become quite a hassle unless you have a generous driveway. And we should be a little liberal on operating around town or whatever. And yeah, vacations are kind of out. They weren't against the rules and I kind of agree with the people that were up here before. What's done is done and just get appropriate rules to prevent it. And then everybody's on notice. And once again, I'm concerned about walkability in bicycles. It's a great idea, but do we really need during business hours to have people darting out in front of your car and realizing that a bicyclist might have more pedestrian rights than you do, even if they run into the side of it or whatever? I almost, I slammed on my brakes the other day, the week before last, because somebody just came up the sidewalk and went out in the street on a bicycle and I had to green, you know? So they don't even obey traffic signs and you can't find them because you can't take their driver's license off of them. You know, you can't give them points. So it's a concern. And on this trash, once again, we heard from several people about it. And yeah, I would say cans are better, but once again, the lids are an issue. They usually disappear or get blown away because they don't get put back where they came from. They're, those dome lids are aerodynamic, so they're really not taken by the wind unless they're upside down or left away somewhere. And they're actually built like an airplane wing so that if the wind goes over the top of the lid, it forces it into the ground more than gives it flight. And another issue on dumpsters, it has to do with construction trash. We had a dumpster in our neighborhood for seven weeks after the construction company was done with it. And it sat there and they kept coming back and depositing more construction waste in it. And then we had dumpster divers in there grabbing scraps of wood and stuff or whatever they needed. Then on top of it, on Labor Day, the neighbor cleaned up. He said it was 300 nails off the street that fell out of the dumpster or somebody... He said it was 300 nails off the street that fell out of the dumpster, or somebody drug something out of the dumpster, and, and all those nails fell on the street, but they were across Guinness Court and down the hill on Alder Street. So, you know, I started going way around the block to avoid that. I usually avoid dumpsters when I see them on the street with roofing, because roofing nails are really great at taking care of your tires. They do a wonderful job, they stand up perfect and have a white head. And on a sewer plant, I'm concerned about that easement, you know? There was one meeting on the sale of the sewer plant, it was up at Marywood. I got treated like a homeless person or something looking to come in out of the warmth. Nobody knew where the meeting was. I left a half hour early from my house and couldn't get to the meeting on time. I heard half the meeting, I didn't see the display, and the first thing in my mind was, was $195,000 going to be left after everything is done for the city? I see it wasn't. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Marie Schumacher. I'd like to start off, last week, Mr. Donahue, you offered to try to get the scoop on 81 South, formerly known as East Mountain Road.
Yes, I did reach out, I haven't heard anything back yet, but I'll reach out again this week.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. And I'd like to congratulate the Ethics Committee for finally getting a kickoff meeting. Now, are you going to give them some budget? Seems there were a lot of staff members on that committee, so are you going to be moving some money around so they can actually accomplish those things?
Yeah, well, my recommendation, I don't want to take your time, do you want me to wait till fifth order?
Okay, wait, that's fine, that would be helpful, yes, I've got a lot here. Now, back hopefully for the last time on the fire chief or actually what the issue is with the car or the SUV. It is the employer's responsibility, if you have a personal auto, to withhold tax for that purpose. And I don't know who does our, our work for the city, but has anybody checked with them to see if taxes were withheld?
No.
Could you do that? Could you find out before next week?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'd like to know both who does the W2s and all that tax stuff.
That would be the Human Resources Department, HR Department.
But, okay, again, and find out specifically how many people have cars then too that are withholding, the city's withholding taxes for them. Now, tonight's agenda, and I want to hopefully get time to get back to last week's, first of all, on, it's 5C. I read that, and for the life of me, I cannot figure out why this is going to take two years to accomplish. I, I think frankly, the, this company that wants the contract, I think even they felt that way, because there's even a section in there where they say, if you want it earlier, we can, we can do that, we'll be prepared to do that. So, I don't know why, if maybe you can tell me in fifth order if you know why it's going to take two years. Then on 7A, B, and C, last week I raised the, the issue of why none of these appointments seem to have either letters of interest or resumes, and I learned that there's a stack of them seen by Mr. Rogan on the mayor's desk, but it's my, my conclusion from that, that you haven't seen them either. Have you seen resumes for the people that are in 7A, B, and C?
These are, these are reappointments, I think that's what Mr. Rogan was referring to, so the original appointment, I, and I could be wrong on this, but I do believe that they were included. That was a few years ago at this point, but they should, it's my belief they should be included in the backup, so I'd agree with you on that.
Well, and I think you should have read it before, all of them again, despite the fact that they were already appointed at once, doesn't mean that they're necessarily totally qualified. I would like to, you know, actually table these and hold them for a week and look at those resumes, but that's your choice. Now I want to go back to last week because I ran out of time, and the one I was on, I believe this one was 7B, it might have been A last week. It was on the appeal for violation notice citation fees and an appeal to stop work orders, condemnation, or demolition to, for other matters. Now, in the case of the violation notice, it was $150. In the case of the condemnation, demolition, they were, it is $300. Now, that's what got me coming, coming into this council, these council meetings. I had legal responsibility for a home, well, for a person and their home, and it was vacant, but it was also heated, it was also well-cared-for, and one day the grass cutters come to my house and they say, hey, you know, that, that house has got a condemnation. I said, oh, you're crazy. They said, come with us. I went with them, sure enough. I ended up going before the hearing board. Fortunately, I, I had the, all of the invoices and she had passed, the woman who owned the home, had passed, and I had just had the, the house assessed. And he, he said what a wonderful condition it was in, and, and they were telling me it was in such a bad condition, they might have to tear it down. So, I think it's wrong to do this. If you should, if you got your money back, I think it would be okay, but right now, it's the way it's set up, you can do that to anybody, and then they have to come in and you collect a hundred bucks or 300 bucks, and tough, because you don't get a refund if you are right and you prove your case. So, I think that was a mistake, and I will talk about the other one next week, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak for council today?
Okay, my name's John Tarantino. I just got a question, because I, I might be off-base here, I'm not sure, but on my computer, I got a, I belong to some neighborhood association, they said there's going to be a, they want to put a gas station convenience store on Green Ridge Avenue and Har, and Sanderson Avenue. Is that true? Did you know anything about that?
I believe that's on the zoning board agenda for Wednesday night.
Oh, for Wednesday night?
Yes.
Okay, well, then it's the wrong place, but...
Wednesday night at 6 o'clock in this venue right here. The zoning board will be entertaining that.
Okay, good, I'm sorry to take your time.
No worries.
No, that's okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to address council tonight?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. Donahue, any motions or comments tonight?
Uh, yes, just real quickly, an update, I asked for a timeline last week on the old Garcia's Market on Princeton Avenue, and I did get something back this afternoon, or this morning, from Mr. Olesky, that the, the demo should occur of that property within, before the end of this month. Also, myself and Councilwoman Dempsey met with representatives from SEIU Healthcare about their contract negotiations with Regional Hospital. Couple, or over the weekend, I, one of the representatives reached out to me, and they're currently working without a contract, which expired on September 30th. So, I would like to make a motion that we send the following letter to the CEO of Regional Hospital, Michael Brown. On the letter reads, Dear Mr. Brown, we were recently informed that members of the SEIU Healthcare of Pennsylvania in your hospital are currently working without a contract, which has expired on September 30th. It is our understanding that negotiations will not begin until the end of October. We are writing you today to urge you and your staff to begin negotiations immediately. As representatives of the city of Scranton, it is a part of our duty to ensure that our residents have access to the highest quality of patient care. We urge you to work with these caregivers to reach a fair union contract that ensures easily attainable and affordable health care while also setting wages that ensure the hospital can recruit and retain the best talent. In closing, thank you for your time and consideration regarding this important matter. We look forward to seeing reports of an agreement that improves the quality of care within the city of Scranton.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Anybody on the question? All those in favor sending the letter to Regional Health, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
Would you please note me as abstaining?
That's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Dempsey, any motions or comments?
Yes, thank you so much. I do have a couple of comments, and then I do have a couple of motions. The first thing I'd like to bring up is, I think most people know me and who've worked with me over the years, it'll be close to 30 years I've been practicing law. No, I try and be as diplomatic as I can in, in just about everything I do, but I also have a strong sense of passion. I'm also the mother of three girls and an aunt of many girls, and a comment was made here tonight that I found offensive as a female, I found offensive as a professional, and that I found insulting as a member of government. And I will not call out the person by name, but when a female candidate running for mayor is called a Barbie doll, again, I find that sexist and I don't think it's acceptable. We do have rules of council that say no person shall use their time to personally insult or attack any individual. I'm going to leave it at that, but I'm going to respectfully request that in the future we refrain from any type of offensive insulting or sexist comments.
Couple other comments, Attorney, excuse me, Mr. Donahue and I are going to visit the Boys and Girls Club, it's going to be this Thursday, actually Mayor Evans is going to be joining us as well, so we're looking forward to that. They want to give us a tour of their facilities and explain to us everything that they do for the boys and girls, and we're looking forward to that. I think that's going to be very informative and very helpful for us to, to see it firsthand. My ongoing venue, my ongoing problems with trash, I do have some announcement. This Thursday at 2:00, I will be having a meeting with NRS, that will be happening over at City Hall. The mayor will be participating as will Mr. Bolzoni, Solicitor Escra, and I'm not sure if additional people from the administration will be coming as well, and NRS will be bringing one, if not two, representatives. So, I am looking forward to that meeting. Again, that will be this Thursday at 2:00, and I'll have an update on that once that is complete. The, I want to give a background on this, and then I'm going to have a quick motion to finalize it. With regard to our gas card audit, Norma, I believe you had asked whether it was going to be all credit cards or in particular, gas cards. Right now, we truly are focusing on gas cards. That is not to say that we are opposed to having other audits, in fact, many of us have spoken about that, whether it be with regards to credit cards. City Council is given that power, and I will repeat, in this post-political corruption era, if there's any time for us to use it, I think it is now. But what we had done a few weeks ago is we had sent a letter to the controller asking her to prepare that audit for us. She kindly wrote back and said, due to a lack of manpower, she is unable to do that. So, Mr. Bolzoni, our business administrator, sent out requests for qualifications or proposals, I'm not quite sure what the correct term is. To make a long story short, I believe they are due back on or before November 1st. Here is my concern from a time standpoint. I don't want us to pick someone, let's say the qualifications are due back November 1st, maybe a decision is not made either that day or for a couple of weeks. I would like to propose, and then I'll make a motion, that we send a letter either to the controller and/or to the BA's office, the business administrator's office, whoever holds these gas bills going back for the last three years, that they start putting these together. And that way, when our auditor is in place, whether it be the first week in November or thereafter, he or she can start working immediately. I don't want this to be delayed. So, gentlemen, my motion would be that we send a letter to the controller and the business administrator, asking them to please put together any and all data, including the gas bills and any other information regarding the holders of the gas cards for the bills going back three years, and to please have that completed by 11/1/19, which is the date when the RFPs are due back.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
And on the question? Uh, yeah, just on the question, so, just so I'm clear, we're just asking, just to have them start to pull the data proactively, so when the auditors come in, it's a clean, quick process.
That's correct.
Okay. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
And then, one more thing if I may, and this was brought up by one of our speakers. I as well was taken aback when I read the headline in today's paper about the Scranton sewer funds, and I was more taken aback when I saw the amount of money that was at stake. I nor, I don't want to speak for these council members, but we sit up here in a fiduciary duty on behalf of the taxpayers of the city, and it is a potential $11 million that could be split 80% to this city and 20% to Dunmore. And I have a lot of questions about that, and I know the article specifically used the term confidential quite a bit, and as a lawyer, I do understand that. However, what we want to know and what we're hoping to find out with regard to these liens that are out there, and with regard to what is being done to try and rectify this situation? How, what in the past have they done? Has this been going on for three years, or have they just started this in the near future? Again, is this deadline coming up in a month, or is this deadline coming up in a year? And we want to know what type of due diligence has been done in order to see, again, what type, the number of easements, number one, and number two, how are they approaching these easements? I'm very concerned about that, and I, as a taxpayer and as a resident, am not willing to sit up here and say that we are willing to lose that 11.5 million or 80% of that. So, my motion on that would be as follows, that we send a letter to Attorney Jason Strive, the Solicitor for the Scranton Sewer Authority, asking him for a meeting as soon as possible, and if it deals with confidential matters, that the same be held in executive session, and that he answer any and all questions that council may have regarding these remaining funds, and any and all questions that council may have regarding these easements.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
And the question?
Yes, on the question, I agree with Attorney Dempsey's motion and her comments. I too have quite a few questions after reading the article in today's paper. My, my first question would be, you know, why wasn't this disclosed? This is a public asset, this is ratepayer money. Going back a few years to when this whole Sewer Authority deal was going down, people were sold a bill of goods, and year after year, it's becoming clearer and clearer that it didn't pan out the way I think people were promised. The fact that this amount of ratepayer money, millions and millions of dollars, can go back to a private company in Pennsylvania, American Water, because a deadline isn't met, is absolutely positively outrageous. This money is the money of the people of the city and of Dunmore. There should be, if there is a deadline, then that deadline should be met. And why it wasn't disclosed is ridiculous, and we need to know why it wasn't disclosed. And quite frankly, and maybe I'm missing something here, if there was a deadline, an escrow reversion deadline, shouldn't it have been in writing someplace? Was it in the purchase agreement? And if not, why not? Was this deadline created after the fact? After the purchase agreement? After the sale had closed? These are all questions, I think what Attorney Dempsey was alluding to as well, is there's a lot of questions that need to be answered here. And I think that the question of why this wasn't disclosed needs to be answered publicly to the people, because I, I don't think we can lose sight of the fact that this is their money. This is millions of dollars over decades that was invested by the This is millions of dollars over decades that was invested by the people of this city and the people of Dunmore. And again, to have that money revert, possibly revert back to a private company, is outrageous. So I thank Attorney Dempsey for the motion, and look forward to the answers, hopefully.
Yes, on the question, that, there's just too much money on the table, that's in limbo without good enough answers, and I think we all discussed that at our caucus today. And, you know, that money, if lost, you know, that's infrastructure improvements, that's City Hall improvements, you know, that money can be used for stormwater management, there's a lot of things that, that that money can go towards, that is gonna be put to well you, and we need to make sure that we have a handle on this. And I know we did talk about inviting Mr. Shrive to a meeting Monday before council, but you know, I'll be the first one to say, if this is something that isn't with his schedule, I'd be willing to meet at any time during the week, to make sure that we get this taken care of. We can meet in an executive session, if necessary, at any point during the week, when we all make ourselves available, because this is something that just can't go on. All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gahan, motions or comments today?
Yes, thank you. Last week, I mentioned an issue in, at Hilltop Manor, several residents had reached out about loud noise and parties going on all hours of the night. I did receive a prompt response from the Chief of Police, that they're coordinating with the Scranton Housing Authority, and that problem is and will be addressed. I believe it was asked a few weeks ago about the LERTA applications, how many had been taken out. We did get a response from Mr. Alessi, from the Licensing and Inspections Department. They currently have five LERTA applications, which represent five new homes in the city. There was also one for a commercial space on Main Avenue in West Scranton. So that was the statistics on that. I did ask in the caucus for Mrs. Reed to contact the Controller's Office for an update on where we stand year-to-date with overtime figures across all departments. Also, I received a complaint that we did send to Licensing and Inspections on a city-owned property, an empty, overgrown lot at 618 East Elm Street. And that's all I have this week, thank you. Oh, actually, sorry, forgot. Mrs. Reed, if you could, and Mrs. Jeffries, if you want to stay after the meeting, and leave your email or your address, or you can wait for a copy, if we can get her a copy of the contract with the signed management company. Also, one thing I wanted to mention was, the zone, we have two openings for the alternate positions on the zoning board, so we did discuss in the caucus that we will be putting out an advertisement in the newspaper, requesting people to submit letters of interest and resumes if they are interested in being an alternate on the zoning board. Mrs. Schumacher, I believe, asked a question about the Ethics Board, and whether we're gonna provide funding for that. Yes, we will. And this is just my thought when we were going through this whole process. I know in the, in the Ethics Code, it calls for the Board to have a secretary. I did talk to Mr. Bolzoni, this would obviously have to be a decision made by the administration, but we do have a Boards and Commissions Secretary. It would be my recommendation, if, you know, they would be willing to do this, that you make that person your secretary. That person is already getting paid to be in charge of the Boards and Commissions. I don't know how that will work, or if they'll be agreeable to that, but I certainly think that would, you know, save money, and I think it makes sense, but, so, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gahan. I only want to comment on something that came up last week, I wasn't able to speak on, that was the Mayor Evans with the raises, I know that was a hot topic, and that was spoke on a lot. But just to weigh in on that, you know, that's something I'm in favor of for this short time period, with the positions taking on extra workload. Is it something I'm interested in going forward for 2020? While I do see there's a benefit in increasing salaries to get the best people for the job, it is difficult for me to justify raises right now in the city of Scranton, when we are still distressed. And I'm well aware of where we are in terms of salary and other cities in this area, whether it be Hazleton, or whether it be Wilkes-Barre. There are, there are positions similar to there that are making more money than we have, but we're not in charge of their cities. We're in charge of our city right now. And while I do believe it's prudent to take care of the people pulling double duty right now, I don't know if going forward and implementing a raise that will just perpetuate into the future, when we are actually not done with getting out Act 47, is the best thing. So, you know, before the budget comes out, I'm sure we'll have discussions on that, we'll go back and forth with the mayor and Mr. Bolzoni, and we can, we can go further and dig deeper in that. That's just, I just wanted to let you guys know where my thinking was right now, behind the current raise situation in 2019, and then the upcoming ones in 2020. But that's all I have for today.
5B for introduction, an ordinance establishing permit parking on the even side of the 900 block of Jefferson Avenue.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Sorry.
And I need a second?
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Barry Isit and Associates Incorporated for the city of Scranton licenses and permits department service assessment.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question. We discussed this in detail in caucus tonight, and I just want to bring up a few questions that I have, and I think we'll hopefully get our questions answered before final passage. I do think we should move cautiously on this, there were only two bidders that submitted, according to Mr. Bolzoni's memo that accompanied this legislation, both are somewhat similar. I do think, though, that we need more explanation on the SafeBuild application. One of the things that they're offering that I am really interested in is something called Community Core. This is a proprietary online community development software tool, which manages permitting, plan reviews and approvals, and inspection activities. The system integrates with other government software systems, and it's designed to streamline and automate building department processes, ensure compliance, manage workflows, generate activity reporting, and provide transparency to all stakeholders. In the SafeBuild proposal, they say that this software solution can transform the way the city conducts plan reviews. Applicants can submit plan reviews electronically and track the progress of each step in real time, from applicant's submittal through certificate of occupancy. This gives the city's clients, people who are coming for permits, clear insight, as well as detailed information on the status of each permit. The interesting thing about this software is that SafeBuild is offering it at no cost, so I think we do have to weigh that before we move forward with this. I don't know, in and of itself, how much that would cost the city, but I do think one of the things that we have discussed over and over and over again, is making that office more efficient, and using technology to make it more efficient. In other words, if you are a person in the city, or a contractor, you should in all rights be able to get a permit online, and receive an update about your permit and the process online through an email, things like that. I think that would make the whole office more user-friendly. One of the other questions that I had in the Barry Isit proposal, which was the other one, the one that the administration is choosing, they have two people who are gonna be doing the review of the department, that's a project administrator at $95 an hour, 12 hours per week, and an administrative assistant for $62.50 cents per hour, six hours per week. So one of the questions I had was, just in, in other reviews in other municipalities, how long it took them to do that type of review? The SafeBuild proposal, they're offering a flat fee for the initial assessment, and then after that, they're, they have one person, a senior-level building official at $115 per hour, and a building analyst at $90 per hour. And again, I don't think they delineated how long it might take for a more detailed review. Two of the other things that caught my eye from the SafeBuild proposal is that they, they would be willing to credit the amount spent on this assessment against any future contracts that extends beyond the 36 months, and they would also allocate 0.4% of the city of Scranton's annual spend with SafeBuild towards local community outreach programs, and then, as I mentioned, the, the cloud-based permitting and inspection software would come at no cost. So I think we should have a deeper conversation with the administration on this, to make sure we're moving forward, and, and what's the most advantageous manner for the citizens and for that department. Thank you.
And I also have the same concerns, I had a conversation with Councilman Gahan this afternoon about this, and looking at reviewing this sheet that we got, that has both comparisons, the first time we got, the first time I got it was this afternoon, when we came in, but just looking at it now, it says that Isit and Associates, their RFQ timeline extends to July 31st, 2021, whereas SafeBuild is only, the initial assessment's only a four-week engagement. So I agree that this is, this is important to do, but if we're gonna do it, we have to make sure we do it right, and if we could do it right, and do it as quickly as possible, that would be even better. So I also have more questions that I'll have to get answered before final passage.
The other thing I want to know, too, if anyone was looking at the backup, the, the costs that were received for each proposal were actually omitted from the, from the backup, so Mr. Bolzoni did provide Mrs. Reed with that information, so we do have that, if anyone would like to look at it. Thank you.
Yeah, as, as Mr. Donahue and Mr. Gahan said, the two bidders, they're very similar, there's pluses and minuses, we're both bids, and we did just get extra information with cost on it today before the meeting, so there is, there's lots to go over, and I do, like these guys, have questions with exactly, why did we choose this one over the other? What was his line of thinking on it? And is this actually the best way to go? Because there are things that we're not gonna get, depending on which company we go, we just want to make sure that we do this right. So we do have questions from Mr. Bolzoni, Mr. Evans, Mayor Evans, and, you know, we hope to get that in the coming weeks, and we'll be able to make a better decision on, on this piece of legislation. All those in favor of introduction, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the Council Number 74, 2019, and ordinance amending file of the Council Number 44, 2014, and file of the Council Number 118, 2015, entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor and Other Appropriate Officials of the City of Scranton to Take All Necessary Actions to Implement the Consolidated Submission for Community Planning and Development Programs to Be Funded Under the Community Development Block Grant Program, Home Investment Partnership Program, and Emergency Solutions Grants Program for the Period Beginning January 1, 2015, and for the Period Beginning January 1, 2016, by Amending the 2015 Action Plan and the 2016 Action Plan by Utilizing $63,831.69 from the 2015 Action Plan, and $63,071.21 from the 2016 Action Plan, in order to provide a total of $126,902.90 under the Home Investment Partnership Program to build a two-unit rental house for low-income families in the city of Scranton, or to acquire and rehab two vacant houses in the city of Scranton for low-income families by and through the Scranton Lakewanna Resources Development Corporation, a subsidiary of the Scranton Lakewanna Human Development Agency.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A, what is your pleasure?
I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
Ayes have it, and so moved.
I would like to make a motion to table item 6A to comply with a 30-day public comment period as required by HUD.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, and a second to table item 6A. On the question? All those, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so moved.
Seventh order, 7A for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 164, 2019, authorizing reapportment of Tara Mann Shankar, 840 Wheeler Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18510, as a member of the Human Relations Commission for an additional four-year term, effective September 12, 2019. Mr. Shankar's term expired on October 14, 2018, and was held over until September 12, 2019. His new term will expire on October 14, 2022.
As temporary chair for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 165, 2019, authorizing reapportment of Paul J. Strunk, 3 Cross Drives, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as a member of the Human Relations Commission for an additional four-year term, effective September 12, 2019. Mr. Strunk's term expired on September 16, 2018, and was held over until September 12, 2019. His new term will expire on September 16, 2022.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption Resolution Number 166, 2019, authorizing reapportment of Om Tim Sina, 809 Cedar Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18505, as a member of the Human Relations Commission for an additional four-year term, effective September 12, 2019. Mr. Tim Sina's term expired on September 16, 2018, and was held over until September 12, 2019. His new term will expire on September 16, 2022.
As temporary chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Attorney Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Gahan?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
Meeting's adjourned.